Good story of the season. I want to welcome everybody. We've got a couple of special things tonight at the beginning here. So, um, let's go ahead and Mrs. Heath is going to say the prayer tonight. And please, everybody stand so we can so do the prayer and the pledges, leations of the flag.
Let us pray. Dear eternal and gracious father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for this community and everyone that has come to assemble in this place on this evening. Lord, we pray for our council members and every citizen of Talbot County. And father god, we especially lift up those that were involved in the shooting in Nashville. We pray for every family that you will wrap your arms around them and give them peace during this time of turbulence. Lord, we thank you and we praise you and we ask for your blessings, not over, not only over this meeting, but over the people of Talbot County. In the mighty name of your son, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Heath. Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, okay. Tonight's agenda, um, March 28th, we have that before us. Is there any additions, deletions, or correction to the agenda?
Mr. Callahan, I'd, uh, we like to offer two amendments. One is to remove item five, the proclamation for Talbot Day, and replace it with a new item five proclamation for National Vietnam War Veterans Day.
Okay, council. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, okay. There's motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay. Number two, did you, did you say there was just one?
That was, uh, the both, the, the, the new proclamation and the, and the removal of the other one were the two items together. So we covered those in one motion.
Okay, okay. That sounds great. Okay, um, next on the agenda is the minutes of March 14th. Council has had a chance to take a look at them. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes?
No.
Good. Okay, hearing none. The chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, next is the dispersments of the March 21st and the 28th. Council's had a chance to take a look at them. Um, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments?
No.
Okay, we're good with that? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, so next is a proclamation for the Vietnam. So you guys, um, or Madam Secretary, you want to go ahead and, and, and read the proclamation? That'd be great.
Proclamation, National Vietnam War Veterans Day, March 29th, 2023. Whereas March 29th was designated National Vietnam War Veterans Day by the Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act of 2017, signed into law by then-President Donald J. Trump. And whereas, this special day joins six other military-centric annual observances codified in Title IV of the United States Code, Section 6, among them Memorial Day, Independence Day, and Veterans Day. And whereas, March 29th is a fitting choice for a day honoring Vietnam War veterans. It was chosen to be observed in perpetuity as March 29th, 1973, was the day United States Military Assistance Command Vietnam was disestablished, and also the day the last US combat troops departed Vietnam. In addition, on and around the same day, Hanoi released the last of its acknowledged prisoners of war. And whereas, March 29th, 2023 marks the 50th anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War. And whereas, Talbot County, Maryland had a large population of military personnel who were residents of Talbot County during the Vietnam War and who served in Vietnam, 1,266 individuals, a number 3.84 times greater than any other conflict. And whereas, in a shady spot outside the Talbot County courthouse, stand two large stone plaques memorializing the 11 Talbot County citizens who fought and died in Vietnam between 1960 and 1973. And whereas, Talbot County recognizes all Talbot County residents who served in Vietnam and their families, and we draw inspiration and pride from all that they are, and honor a generation who exuded the very meaning of courage, bravery, honor, and sacrifice. Now therefore, we, the county council of Talbot County, do hereby recognize March 29th, 2023 as National Vietnam War Veterans Day, the 50th anniversary of the end of the war, and call observance to the attention of all our citizens, and encourage all Talbot Countians to honor, recognize, and thank those who answered the call to serve for the service they so selfish, selflessly gave. And to particularly honor those who made the ultimate sacrifice and laid down their lives to preserve through freedom throughout the world, those who were prisoners of war, and those who are still missing in action. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County, Maryland, this 28th day of March in the year of our lord, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I really appreciate it. Ronnie, Ronnie, would you come on up, please? And Kenley, would you come on up? It'd be great. Yeah, sure. Good. You guys, you want to introduce yourself?
Sure.
Yeah.
Good evening, the council members. My name is Ron Cheesom. I'm the current commander at the Easton VFW, post 5118.
Mm-hmm.
And standing to the left of me is the past post commander, Kenley Timms, and a Vietnam veteran himself.
I got you. Got you. Kenley, you want to say something?
Yep, well.
I'll start off.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, no problem.
What I'd like to do is personally invite the council members and their families to our ceremony tomorrow night.
Mm-hmm.
March 29th, as you know, is the National Vietnam War Veterans Day.
Right.
At seven o'clock, we're starting our, our honoring, remembering of all the Vietnam veterans. And we mean Vietnam veterans, not only the ones that served on foot in the war, but also the Vietnam era that are home in the ball, um, you know, that worked behind the lines.
Right.
And that they're a key part of it as well.
Sure.
Um, so, um, any members that you know that were in the Vietnam era and haven't come to the post,
uh, have reached out to be a member, or even to, to get pinned, which Kenley will talk about, um, later,
um, they're certainly welcome to, to join us.
Sure. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Ronnie.
Also, I want to thank the council. I hope a couple of you can make it tomorrow. Uh, one of the big events that we will have tomorrow night, the VFW is one of the commemorative partners of the Vietnam pinning.
Mm-hmm.
And we will be pinning any Vietnam era veterans that served from November 1955 to May of 1975. When I say a pin, they will get a pin where we ask them to do the pinning, and we read a proclamation. And also want to stress, like, uh, Ryan said, not only Vietnam veterans, because a lot of veterans who served during that timeframe, they kind of lay back, no, they supported us. We couldn't, the service could not make it without the guys and gals in the back. So we, this program does honor them also.
That's great. That's great. Okay.
And we, as Ron mentioned, we'll have some refreshments.
Mm-hmm.
And we're going to give veterans an opportunity to speak for a few seconds.
Sure.
And assuming this is going to be in the paper or on the news, if I think this happens tomorrow, we're hoping veterans would like to join some of our veterans organizations. We will have representatives from all Dejan, VFW, Vietnam Veterans of Chapter 648. And hopefully, if they don't bring some kind of documentation with them, their DD 214 or some other documentation, we'll, we'll catch them later. But we hope we get some new members to our organizations.
That's great. That's great. Well, we appreciate everything, council.
Yes, we certainly appreciate all that you do. Um, I have a veteran in my household too, so thank you for your service.
Ms. Milkie?
I was married to a Vietnam veteran who also heard a Purple Heart. So, my heart's with you.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, I just, just thank you for what you're doing. I'd like to acknowledge my, my dad and mom who are also here tonight. My dad spent some time in Nam, uh, as well as my father-in-law and my mother-in-law. Uh, he also served in the Navy, so my dad was in the Marine Corps, father-in-law was in the, in the Navy. So, uh, you know, just wanted to thank them for, for their support and, uh, what they've done for our country as well. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Lesher?
Thank you, commander and past commander, uh, and for, uh, and for all that you're doing to promote this awareness of, of, of Vietnam veterans. I know that, that, uh, that when our, our Vietnam veterans came back, they did not, uh, they did not feel welcomed at the time. And I hope that we're doing what we can today, uh, to, to help to make up for that.
And I, and I would add to that too, commanders, that we're blessed to have people like you that serve and protect us. Okay? And you deserve everything. You deserve the credibility of keeping us safe and making our country what it is today. And we really, really appreciate that. So, we've got something for you. Come on up, guys. And Ms. Milkie's going to come down there and give you a proclamation.
Thank you, guys.
I'll get ready this. If you can present that tomorrow night in front of the deputy.
I think Ms. Milkie's playing.
I'll be there.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, she's going to be there. Yep, yep, yep.
Bring all these family members.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, man. Good job. Good job.
Okay, we're blessed to have those guys, that's for sure. Okay, next up, Ray Clark, you want to come on up? Okay, we got the Maryland Department of Transportation list, um, priority list that you want to go over?
Yes, sir. And I, we have here Mike Murtaugh, the Assistant County Engineer as well.
Welcome, guys.
Uh, basically, real quick.
Yep.
Uh, based upon our last year's submission, uh, our priority number one ranking for the SHA projects was Maryland Route 322 and the US, um, um, 50 intersection north. Uh, in addition, our number two project was actually, uh, capacity and safety and evacuation improvements to Maryland Route 33. Uh, and our third was the, um, Route, uh, Maryland Route 30, 33, Oxford Causeway in the town of Oxford. And then ultimately, our, our number four priority project was the, uh, Maryland Route 329 Royal Oak Road, uh, safety improvements, primarily looking at widening of that road. Uh, again, that's a state highway road. And then we also broke out, I guess, some of our projects for, uh, you know, to address safety issues for cross-traffic, uh, on US Route 50, and we had 5A. 5A was basically US Route 50 and 320, uh, 328, which is Goldsboro, uh, Street Intersection Improvements. Maryland, uh, 5B was Maryland Route, um, 50 and Maryland Route, uh, I'm sorry, uh, uh, Maryland Route 50 and, um, Route, uh, 331 Dover Street Intersection Improvements. And our number of C, 5C, was, uh, US Route 50 and Chapel Intersection Improvements. And ultimately, our last project on the list was number six, which was the Maryland, uh, Route 3, uh, Maryland Route 50, uh, Maryland Route 309, Maryland Route 662. And these were also associated with the hospital. And just a highlight for the county council, uh, towards the end of this, we do have some discussion about Airport Road. And one recommendation to the council might be to pull Airport Road out. Uh, we are looking at trying to do improvements on Airport Road. So it might be a worthwhile, uh, you know, time to pull this out as a separate project and either listed as a priority number five or a priority number seven, however the council feels that should be listed. Um, and the only other comment I would make is maybe also, we have not re, I've not had an opportunity to reach out to the towns for any projects they would ha, like to have listed on this. I know in talking, uh, Rick Van Ember, who's with the town of Easton here tonight, has identified some possible rails or trail projects. So we will probably do the same thing as we've done with the Easton Airport. We've listed the Easton Airport projects and maybe have some of the projects, uh, for, you know, towns of Trap, St. Michael's, as well as, uh, Easton, that might have rails and trails and other, uh, priority projects that those towns have.
Okay, that's great. Um, so you, so when it comes to the Airport Road, okay, and you said in the priority stuff. So, so, so right now, we've been working on that quite a while.
Mm-hmm.
So, so we're, we've got, are we, do we have permits, um, so in the makings right now?
We are working on the process of securing the necessary permits for the county-owned portion. Um, right now, what we're up against is that we have, um, two areas of air, you know, pretty much at both ends of Airport Road.
Mm-hmm.
We actually have, um, runway protection zones.
Mm-hmm.
So we're having to put together a package that would then be submitted to FAA for their review and approval of the road improvements in those, what they call RPCs, or runway protection zones.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what we're working on right now. So.
Okay.
And then the other, I think when we're talking Airport Road, pretty much, we're looking at, when we're, from the county standpoint, we're looking at doing the upgrades to the county road. But when you get into, let's say, Old Centerville Road and Airport Road, that intersection, and then you get into US Route 50 and Airport, that's actually state highways.
I see.
So that's why I'm suggesting we may want to add this to the CTP, um, to, one, make them aware that we're, we're looking at trying to do these improvements in that area. I have, in the past, advised Ken Fender, District 2 engineer of our projects, uh, but it may be worthwhile for us to maybe add this to the CP, CTP.
So, so just, just a, the question, so, so when you go off of 50 and go through the little intersection of Kennedy Street in, in, um, what is Long Woods? So then it hits county. Then it hits county road.
Yes, yeah, you, you, it, it pretty much, I think, 662 goes all the way from 322.
Right.
Um, you know, unless the Old Centerville Road at 322 goes all the way up to Airport Road. That's still a state highway road. Um, the problem we run into is that when you get, the, SHA likes to control the intersections.
Well, now, I, I know that. I, I, right. But what I was kind of getting at, so, so, so the state road portion is not the problem. It's from there forward. So, I'm just kind of, I'm just kind of curious.
You are, you are correct. You, uh.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand. I would see, they would be pretty quick by saying, we don't have to do your road, we just need to go from your point that way.
Correct. Yes.
So.
And, and, and I think to help clarify you correctly.
Yeah.
The county is only going to be improving its roadway from, from the state highway roadway.
Yeah.
Uh, down Airport Road to Goldsboro neck.
Yes.
So what we're, we're looking at doing is, anything that happens in those intersections, SHA controls. So we would have to work with them on any type of intersection improvements on Airport Road that are in that intersection of 662 or Old Centerville Road, as well as US Route 50.
Okay, alright.
So, but yeah, we are currently working on.
Okay.
Widening Airport Road.
Is there anything we can do? Because I know, I know honestly with the, with both traffics on both sides of the airport and the industrial park, it, it's becoming a, a pretty big problem.
We agree.
So anything that we can do to help you, Ray, we'd be glad to do.
I think we, we've had some preliminary discussions late last year with, uh, the, uh, property owner that's, um, building the warehouses out on Easton, um, in, uh, Easton Technology Park.
Right.
And I think once we have our application into S, um, FAA for review, I think it would be worthwhile for us to contact our federal delegation and begin the discussion of trying to have them help push us that, push that project, project through the review process.
That would be great. Okay. Any other questions from council?
Uh, I just want to express appreciation to Mr. Clark for, uh, the suggestion that we coordinate this annual list, uh, not only our, with our own supplements, but with, uh, with the municipalities. I think that that is a, a terrific idea. Uh, and, uh, I'd, I'd certainly encourage us to, uh, um, open that communication with municipalities. Uh, I'm sure that they would appreciate our voice added to what they see as priorities along state highways in their jurisdictions. Let's, 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 uh, take that, that, that step.
Will do. Any other counsel?
No, I just echo what Pete says. I would strongly agree. And, you know, ask that we coordinate and communicate with the municipalities to have their projects added to the list so that we can, um, you know, be lock and step with some of these priorities.
I'll do that.
Go, go ahead, Mike.
I was just going to say, with the exception to the addition of that and, and 662, the, the order, the rankings fine with everyone?
Mm-hmm. Yep, that's fine. That's fine. Mr. Step, you want to say anything? Are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, okay.
And, and we, we, we don't take things off this list until the, uh, until state highway actually makes some improvements.
Um, do, do you want us to bring back the listing of the ca, uh, the town projects as well for you to review prior to adoption of the CTP list? So we, I'll do, try and work to get that in the next two weeks.
Okay, that'd be, that'd be great.
Fabulous. Thank you.
To your point, Mr. Lesher, you know Dover Road and 404 used to be on this list.
Yes.
And we were here, so, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
Do we need a formal vote to approve the list?
Yeah, yeah, we do. We need, we need a motion. I need a motion to.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion second to.
This is, this is an approval pending the, the additions that we would get from, from the municipalities and, and that, uh, um, Airport Road.
Yeah, we'll update and provide that.
Okay, okay. Okay, so the motion is, we got a motion second to approve the list that, that Ray has, um, put, presented us. Um, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, guys. Good, good job. Okay, next on the agenda is a presentation of Delmarva Community Transit, FY24 Annual Transit Plan. Welcome, welcome, guys. How are you?
Good evening.
Good, good.
Keith Atkins, Deputy Director, Andrea Waters, Transit Specialist, Grant Specialist. Um, Santo could not be with us tonight, but he sends his best.
That's good.
Uh, council, thank you for the opportunity to present and request approval for the Upper Shore FY24 Annual Transportation Plan. This ATP covers Talbot, Carolina, and Kent Counties and provides nine fixed and deviated routes, uh, to these counties. The FY24 ATP, uh, upper shore budget has expenses of $1,624,059, revenue from fare boxes and fuel tax refund of $58,037, for a net project cost of $1,566,022. With local match funds and $120,217 of Delmarva Community Transit CARES funds, the remaining $1,246,967 will be provided by FTA and MTA funds. The FY24 ATP includes capital to replace two cutaway buses that have reached their end of life according to FTA and MTA guidelines and preventive maintenance for the buses operating in Talbot, Carolina, and Kent Counties. DCT has seen increases in route ridership, especially with the implementation of the Talbot Mud. We have placed a huge focus on customer service by means of on-time schedules, demand response, and reliability. We have agreements in place with three county health departments for non-emergency medical transportation and work closely with Upper Shore Aging on providing transportation for seniors. I want to thank you for agreeing, agreeing to be the lead county for Talbot, Carolina, and Kent, and look forward to working with your great staff. And I thank you for your consideration on this request. And Andrea, do you have anything to add?
I've covered it all.
Okay, good job. Good, great job. Um.
Council discussion?
Good.
Just, just thank you guys for all that you do. I mean, thank you for being, you know, fiscally responsible, especially in, in today's times. I mean, it's a, it's, it was nice to see what you guys put forth, and just thank you for all you do. Thank you, sir.
I'm, I'm the council liaison to Upper Shore Aging. And so I hear, uh, repeatedly how valuable the Talbot Mobility On Demand program is and how transformative that has been for, uh, for our seniors in getting them to medical appointments, getting them to shop, and getting them, for those who don't have their own, their own transportation. This is, uh, an enormously valuable service that you, uh, provide at Talbot County. And, and it's, uh, and it's a key part of this transportation plan. So I'm, I'm thrilled to, uh, be able to approve this, this transportation plan tonight.
Thank you, sir.
I'm, I'm pleased to approve it as well, for all the reasons he stated.
Yeah.
The demographic really needs your services and appreciates them deeply.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, and same thing as Pete stated, the, uh, mobility on demand is just an excellent service, and it seems to be working for Talbot County. So, thank you for that. Tell Sandy thank you as well.
Thank you.
You guys do a great job, and, and really, at the end of the day, you change a lot of people's lives of, of what you do for us. So we really, really appreciate it. It gives people an opportunity to, to go out and, you know, that's, that's, that gives them that much freedom, that you, you allow them to, to do that with your services. So really appreciate that. So.
So with, with that, Mr. Callahan, I'll, I'll move approval of the, uh, annual transportation plan.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you please call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay, thanks a lot. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Okay. Okay, um, next on the agenda in this introduction to, um, administrative resolution. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that, please?
A resolution authorizing Talbot County to file an application with the Maryland Transit Administration of the Maryland Department of Transportation for a Section 5303, 5304, 5307, 5309, 5310, and 5311 grant under the Federal Transit Act. Whereas the Maryland Transit Administration is the designated recipient in Maryland for grants under the Federal Transit Act. And whereas, the administrator of the Maryland Transit Administration of the Maryland Department of Transportation is authorized to make grants to counties and to local governments for a mass transportation program of projects. And whereas, the contract for financial assistance will impose certain obligations upon the applicant, including the provision by the contract of the local share of the project costs in the program. And whereas, is required by the United States Department of Transportation in accordance with the provisions of Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, that in connection with the filing of an application for assistance under the Federal Transit Act, the applicant give an assurance that it will comply with Title. the applicant give an assurance that it will comply with Title Six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four and the United States Department of Transportation requirements thereunder. And whereas it is the goal of the applicant that minority business enterprise be utilized to the fullest extent possible in connection with this project and that definite procedure shall be established and administered to ensure that minority business shall have the maximum construction contracts, supplies, equipment contracts or consultant and other services. Now therefore be it resolved by Talbot County, Maryland, the filing of the aforesaid applications be endorsed and be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be sent to the Maryland Transit Administration of the Maryland Department of Transportation. Now therefore the County Council of Talbot County, Maryland hereby endorses this resolution thereby indicating approval thereof. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this twenty-fifth day of April in the year of our, sorry, the, the eleventh day of March, twenty-eighth day of March in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay, good job, Madam Secretary. Okay, so is there a motion in a second, um, is there a motion?
I move for approval.
Okay, I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so I got a motion second to, um, approve the administrative resolution as presented. Um, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lasher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay, alright, good job. Next on the agenda is discussion of the General Assembly, uh, legislation. Okay. We've got some items before us pending, um, at the General Assembly, Madam Secretary, would you please read the titles of the bills, um, into the record, please?
House, the title of House Bill one nineteen, County Boards of Education Curriculum Guides and Courses of Study Requirements. Do you want me to continue on the first paragraph?
Yeah, might as well, okay.
For the purpose of requiring each county board of education to follow the policy and guidelines for the Program of Instruction for Public Schools established by the State Board of Education, requiring the state superintendent to provide notice to a county board if the state superintendent determines that the county board is not following the state policy and guidelines or is authorizing students to opt out of instruction in a manner that is not approved by the state board, requiring the state superintendent to direct the state comptroller to withhold certain funds from the county board if the county board does not resolve the discrepancy within certain periods of time, requiring the state comptroller to release funds withheld if the state superintendent determines that the county board has resolved the discrepancy and generally relating to a county board of education's curriculum guides and courses of study.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Step, you want to comment on this?
Yeah, I'd love to, so, um, I'm, I'm requ, made this request of council to, um, you show a letter of support for our local board of education, uh, for their objection to this, uh, or should I say their, you know, their, their disagreement with this, uh, with, with this, uh, with this legislation. Uh, i- in short, as you just heard, as you just heard, uh, an excerpt of it read, it's absolute garbage legislation out of Annapolis. Um, it was bad and now it's worse, uh, it's passed the House, it's cross filed in the Senate, um, asking for council support in this because as you hear, it's basically taking away the authority of our local elected school board. Uh, they're making these demands and, and giving, uh, authority to a non-elected official. I believe it has no business in, in any county of Maryland, our, uh, school board has already sent, uh, this letter of opposition, which the next hearing is tomorrow at one P M. I've asked this letter make its way over to the state legislature, uh, first thing tomorrow morning in opposition of, uh, of this legislation. That's about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Lasher?
Yeah, uh, if you read the fiscal note from the Department of Legislative Services, it talks about how the, this, the state superintendent already has the authority to withhold all, all or part of the state's funding to the local school board if it fails to, uh, meet curricular requirements. It notes that these requirements refer to English Language Arts and Math Curricula and this bill will add, uh, health education to that scope, although the state requirement is that the health education be age-appropriate, a requirement that would seem to address many of the objections, the larger here, the larger issue here is, is one of local autonomy to establish curricula in the county. And our school board, uh, as Mr. Step has noted, has come out strongly in objection, uh, to this legislation and I feel it's appropriate for this council to show its support, uh, for the school board in opposition, so I'll, I'll, I'll certainly support our, our letter of opposition.
Okay.
And I certainly too support the school board in this matter and we will not be bullied by Annapolis.
I too support it, um, just like, uh, Mr. Lasher stated and Dave, um, spoke as well, that, um, we want our locals to be able to control our curriculum, so I stand in agreement with us sending the letter.
Could I add one more point too?
Absolutely.
I'd encourage all of our other, uh, neighboring counties and their councils to, uh, to, to urge their, uh, near their opposition to this as well. Many other school boards recently have, uh, or locally have also done that and joined and I believe our, uh, the, uh, the, the board is, uh, that oversees the, uh, the Board of Elections too, they, they put forth their, uh, their objection letter as well. So I believe if we all stand together, this is, uh, this should be a force to be reckoned with, so, thank you.
Okay, yep, yep, no problem, so, yep. Okay, so Madam Secretary, um, is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, um, to send, um, a letter opposing this bill. Madam Secretary, could you please call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lasher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, next, um, Mr. Stan, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, members of council, under County Manager Report this evening, we have, uh, board and committee assignment request and then I have four pieces of business for you this evening.
Sure.
Uh, under Boards and Committees, uh, the first is Board of Electrical Examiners requesting the reappointment of Joe Seacrest, uh, to that board.
I'll move to approve, make the appointment.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion seconded to put Mr. Seacrest back on the, uh, the, uh, board, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lasher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Next is the Commission on Aging requesting the reappointment of Jennifer Marche from Homes, Home Instead, Rachel Smith, Londonderry, Vida Gibson, Asbury Place and Kate Stinton from the Health Department.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion second to put, um, uh, various, um, ladies on their aging, um, aging.
Commission on Aging.
Commission, sorry, um, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lasher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
And the next would be the Upper Shore Aging Board of Directors requesting the appointment of Mr. Corey Pack to serve on that committee or on that board.
I'll move the appointment.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in second to put Mr. Pack on the Upper Shore Aging Committee. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lasher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
And finally, uh, council, I just wanted to make an announcement, the county has a number of vacancies available on other boards and committees, if you're interested in serving, please contact County Manager's Office at four one zero seven seven zero eighty-ten or visit our website at W W W dot Talbot County M D dot gov. Vacancies exist on the following, the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board, the Agriculture Resolution Board, Animal Control Board, Board of Appeals, Board of Electrical Examiners, Commission on Aging, Historic Preservation Commission, Talbot County Local Drug and Alcohol Abuse Council and the Talbot County Property Tax Assessment Appeals Board. So again, if anyone's interested and can hear this message, please reach out and say that you would like to serve. Moving on to other business, uh, we have a letter, uh, of requests from the trustees of the Third Haven Meeting, uh, asking for a letter of support to the Maryland Historical Trust Grant, um, application process. As you read in your agenda packet, the trustees of Third Haven are requesting a letter of support for their application to Maryland Historical Trust for the grant funds in the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to assist with structural repair for their meeting house, no county funds will be required.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion seconded to go ahead and support a grant application for Thread Haven Meeting House. Um, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lasher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
And, uh, I would invite Preston, is Preston in the room?
I think he's outside there.
Okay. I would ask Preston to come forward, we have a request from the Department of Public, uh, I'm sorry, the Department of Parks and Recreation, recommendation to award bid number twenty-three zero one asphalt paving, Y Public Landing at one two five zero zero Y Landing Lane, Y Mills, Talbot County, Maryland. As you read in your agenda packet, the Director of Parks and Recreation is requesting council approval to award bid number twenty-three zero one to the second lowest bidder, um, R L Ewing Contractors Incorporated of Easton, Maryland in the sum of sixty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. A total of six bids were received and Preston Pepper is here to answer any questions or add any other information to this request.
Okay. Any, any questions from council?
Well, I presume that you're going to address why we're awarding this to the second lowest bidder.
So, um, one of the reasons why we're awarding it to the second lowest bidder was because it is a local business, but the, the bigger problem is I have not been able to contact the, the lowest bid. We've tried to get ahold of them for about seven days, nobody answers the phones and their mailbox is full. So there's no way for me to contact them and it's, it makes me a little uneasy to enter into a contract with somebody that I'm not going to be able to con, to contact throughout the course of a project.
Right, and that makes me uneasy that if we have a problem, they're nowhere to be found.
Correct.
That's it, so I'm, I'm okay with this. Any other questions?
Nope, make a motion to approve R L Ewing Contractors.
Okay, Madam Secretary, we got a motion second to go ahead and approve R L Ewing for the contract work.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lasher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Preston. Good job.
Preston, it was good to see you.
So I'd invite, uh, Rick Van Enberg from the Town of Easton, if you'd like to come forward. Uh, we have a request from the Town of Easton for approval of right-of-way utility easements on Port Street, as you read in your agenda packet. The Town of Easton is respect, is requesting council approval for right-of-way utility easements on Port Street. The town is planning on putting all utilities underground, there are a total of four easements, two for Town of Easton and two for Verizon. The county attorney has reviewed the request and both the county attorney and Mr. Van Enberg are here to add to this subject.
Sure.
Welcome.
Thank you, good evening.
It's a different meeting for you, isn't it?
This is, yes. Yeah, so, so Rick Van Enberg, I'm the town engineer for Town of Easton and, uh, um, I didn't have anything prepared tonight, but I was here to answer any questions. This is related to the project on Port Street to take the overhead utility lines, put them in conduit underground and remove the utility poles. And so this specific request is for the Talbot County property, uh, as you head down to the boat ramp on the left-hand side, close to the boat ramp.
Okay, that's good. Counsel, any, good, Mr. Lasher?
Well, I, I'm, I'm just, uh, I'm, I'm happy to see any progress on the, uh, on the vision for Easton Point moving forward and I know that, 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 uh, this has been a priority of Easton's for some time, that it is something that, uh, Easton has coordinated with the county over, uh, on, on zoning matters and, and more and, uh, so, uh, happy to lend my support to this, uh, this collaboration and, and the one small step toward that realization of the vision.
Giant leap.
Yep, way up, yep. Any other, any other?
No comment.
Okay.
Well, with that, I'll move for approval.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and, um, approve the easement for the, for the town, Madam Sec, Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lasher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay.
And Mr. Van Enberg, I presume you'll take back to Easton our, our, our gesture earlier to, uh, engage, uh, the municipalities in our trans, consolidated transportation plan priorities.
Hopefully he enjoyed the relaxed environment here.
Yes, I did enjoy it. Thank you.
Uh, council, in the last piece of business, uh, bear with me as I read this to you. Uh, we are requesting that you, we, uh, we're actually, uh, asking council to approve entering a contract for sale and purchase a real property consisting of two point two eight acres of land, more or less being same property described as Seventh Place and a deed dated April twenty-sixth, two thousand and two and recorded among the land records of Talbot County, Maryland in Library M A S number ten sixty, Folio four fifty-three, as shown on Talbot County Tax Map one oh one as parcel two sixty-four, tax identification number zero one dash zero five five one zero zero. As you read in your agenda packet, I'm requesting council approval to acquire unimproved real property located at Glebe Road in Easton in the sum of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The property is needed for the runway protection zone for the Easton Airport, uh, the airport has sufficient funds for the acquisition of this property.
Thank you.
And Patrick can add anything to that if you would like.
Well, uh, Mr. Thomas, just, just explain, uh, so people can visualize where that piece of property is, it's like right across from Ruby Tuesdays.
Yeah, so if you're looking at the intersection on the bypass where you have Ruby Tuesdays and, um, the vacant lot on, on the one side of the bypass, so it's that one vacant lot that.
On the corner.
On the corner, it's used for, for ag purposes.
Yes.
So this will keep, the county will acquire the property, it would stay vacant, it's a runway protection area, um, associated with the expansion of the, the, the larger airport expansion, runway expansion project.
Okay, sounds good. Any other discussion from council? Okay, um, is there a motion?
I'll, I'll, I'll move for, for the approval, knowing that, uh, that the, uh, airport has sufficient funds to pay for it.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, we got a motion in a second to approve the request.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lasher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
And council, that concludes the County Manager Report tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job. Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. Okay, and do we have a list or? Nobody, nobody signed up, okay. Uh-oh.
Yeah, I can fill in just a little bit.
Alright, I'll, I'll give you a minute now, okay, alright.
Real short.
Hello, everyone, Terrence Bernard, a few weeks ago I tried to make a comment about, uh, following up off of a P A B meeting that it was, it was, uh, mentioned that it would be nice to get some positive, uh, publicity out there for our law enforcement. We're not Oakland, California, we're not Baltimore, but we have some good, good law enforcement here. At the P A B meeting, that included Easton Police was there, our local, uh, Town Police was there, St. Michael's and also the sheriffs. And, uh, in the, I do subscribe to the Cambridge newspaper and periodically, once a month at least, they do have some comments in there about their officers in there. I just brought that, that I wanted to share here.
Well, that's good.
If the idea is still there, these are our, our law enforcement and, and I'm proud to have them.
Yep.
Hope everyone else.
Absolutely.
Feels the same way, if we had a little bit of publicity, it might be difficult to get through our star Democrat.
Yeah.
But, but maybe something can work out, I mean, the sheriffs and the police have all the information, all they need is a contact. Can I email this to you, what are you looking for, you know, education, promotions, rescues, life savings?
Yep, absolutely, well, we appreciate that, Terrence, you bringing that to our attention in a positive note, that's for sure, because we do support our law enforcement and they needed to be, they need to be recognized all the time for the good stuff that they do for us, so I, I really appreciate that, bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Yep.
If I may, just.
Okay. Alright, um, anybody else, mom and dad, you want to do any, say anything? Huh, we good? Your son's doing a good job up here, that's for sure, you know? So, um, okay, um, next on the agenda is council comments.
Oh, you're starting with me?
I'm gonna start, you want me, you want me to come back to you? Want me to come back?
No, 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 I'll be first tonight.
No, I just wanted to thank the Finance Director and staff and, um, the incumbent council, Councilman Lasher and Councilman, um, Callahan for just guiding us through the budget and just for the leadership, um, for us diving into, to the budget this year, so it's been a great experience and I know that the Finance Department and Jessica and Clay are working really hard.
Right.
Um, you know, to ensure that.
Right.
We have everything that we need, so I just wanted to thank them publicly for that.
Thank you, that's, that's, I appreciate that. Ms. Milkie?
Here, here.
Okay, okay, that's good.
Move on.
Mr. Lasher?
I just had the pleasure of attending the opening night performance of Chicago over at, uh, the Easton High School uh, and I want to take a moment to recognize the, uh, excellence in the arts that I witnessed. The performances, uh, from our Talbot County students were extraordinary and the value, uh, and, and I witnessed the value of exposing our students to this level of excellence, uh, that value is really inestimable.
Thank you, Mr. Lasher, I appreciate that. Step?
I'd just like to, just to echo, uh, Ms. Hayes' comments and just thank, uh, not, not just our, our Finance Department, but, uh, you know, Clay, Susan, Jess, Karen, I mean. but, you know, Clay, Susan, Jess, Karen, I mean, everyone who's behind the scenes here that's making our job, you know, just capable, right? There's an awful lot to go through, awful lot to cover, Patrick, you as well. Just, yeah, we have a tall order to make sure we're spending our county's money in a fiscally responsible way. We want to make sure we do everyone proud and I just want to thank you all for all the behind-the-scenes work that's going into that and getting us the numbers and, you know, then trying to squeeze them and help us make decisions, so thank you from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
That's great, and I'll add to that too. So, you know, you, we have a phenomenal council, that's for sure and you guys have been doing great and it is sometimes a lot of information in a short period of time. When you come into office, you know, right out the gate, you're in the budget and it's been a pleasure so far working with you guys. I appreciate you really, you know, having the confidence in reaching out to me and Pete on, you know, anything that you need because it really is a team effort. As you can see, it's more of a team and trusting each other and, you know, you know, we're all here to agree to disagree, but at the end of the day, we're right here and we've got to provide a service to the public and that's what we're doing. And that's what's making a good council. And, you know, staff brings us information every day, day in and day out. Jess, it keeps me straight all the time, you know, are you coming? Yep, I'm coming, I forgot, but I'm coming. Okay? So, you know, it's just the background things that you guys really help us with and it means a lot to all of us, that's for sure, and we appreciate the good job and we appreciate the public, you guys coming out saying us too. I mean, it means a lot, we're always there for you, we'll do the best we can. You might not like to hear the answer all the time, but, you know, we're going to be honest with you and transparent to you guys, that's for sure. So, being that said, Mr. Lusher, you want to?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 11th, beginning at 6:00 PM. The council will be convening an open session at 4:30 PM and then adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal and personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. The county council will be holding budget deliberations on Thursday, March 30th, beginning at 4:30 PM and Tuesday, April 4th, at 4:30 PM. Both deliberations will take place in the Bradley Meeting Room. On Monday, April 3rd, the county council will be meeting with the Eastern Town Council at their chambers located at 14 South Harrison Street for two work sessions as follows. At 4:30 PM, a work session to discuss the Easton Point project and at 5:30 PM, a work session to discuss the request for supplemental growth allocation for Thomas Cohi and Lot 16 LLC located at 28580 Mary's Court in Easton.